Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. Roll numbers on there? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let's start our January 13th meeting. Happy New Year to everyone. Could you all, Ms. Graham, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Castillo?
I'm here.
Commissioner Good?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Here.
Commissioner Sykle?
I'm here.
Mayor Ortes?
Here.
City Manager Dodge?
Here.
City Attorney Goran?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, thank you. Okay, Mr. Goran, do you want to do a little dissertation on the, of the meeting, the way it should be run?
Yes, Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, just briefly to you, Mayor and Commissioner. Good evening and welcome to Wednesday and happy, healthy, good new year to each one of you and your families. As you know, Mayor and Commissioner, tonight you're operating under Emergency Ordinance Number 1952, which you adopted in November, on the 19th of November of 2020, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, not just in the city of Pembroke Pines, but in the state of Florida, our country, and in the world. As you know, the premise for Emergency Ordinance Number 1952 are two bases, three bases. The first of which is the Governor's Executive Order Number 20-52, which is the statewide declaration of emergency, which in late December, on December 29th, Governor DeSantis extended that order from the 29th of December for 60-plus to 60 days, which will take it into the month of February. And your ordinance is tied to that specifically declared state emergency. The second part of which, under Chapter 252 of the Florida Statute of Governing Statewide Authority for Public Emergencies, was also the third prong in that discussion as well. So for the purposes of discussion tonight, you're operating as a virtual meeting with a virtual quorum. To the extent that each commissioner is physically present by, in virtual order, you have a quorum and can do public business. The most important aspect, though, of access to a public meeting is having the public's right of access. And absent any direction from administration or from our IT Director or the Clerk, it appears that all those folks that try to log on, email in, or call in will have that accessibility for the purposes of the record. Couple of items for the rules of the room for the members of the public who chose to appear this evening, or counsel for applicants, or representatives of applicants. There was a notice published, as you know, in the city's website declaring this meeting in the context of Emergency Ordinance Number 1952. The notice was sent out and the public can participate in the following options. You may call in to the telephone number provided, which for the record is number 1-408-418-9388. That's 1-408-418-9388. The meeting number for the access code, if you're logging in, is 179-318-0185. And this city is operating under what's called a WebEx virtual platform, which is a recognized method of access by the public and by others. You may also submit comments via email, which will be read into the record at a specified time that the mayor will direct and authorize specifically. Or some folks have actually pre-registered via email, which will then be read into the record as well at a time certain during this meeting. Pre-registration and accessing the meeting via the WebEx platform can be done in the following three ways. Number one, again, is the fact that comments submitted via email will be read into the record so that anyone who took the time and effort, who couldn't come to the meeting physically because the building is not open to the public, their emails will have dignity and will be heard on the record specifically. Number two, the members of the public who have pre-registered, and there are a number of people that have, and who have accessed the meeting via the WebEx platform I just described, will be identified and told to unmute their phone to comment on an item that may be before the Mayor and Commission. The person will be asked to identify themselves by stating their first name, their last name, and their address, which is not legally required if it were an in-person meeting, but because we are in a virtual platform, there's no way to recognize who people are or where they're from. If you choose to raise your hand, you have to push the icon star three. Jonathan Bonilla, who is the Wizard of Oz, is basically behind the screen and is recognizing all the information. He will be able to recognize you and put you in line to be able to be heard. Members of the public who are not able to pre-register, and there are some that were not, but who have called in will be identified by their area code and the first three numbers, a telephone number, for example, 954-849 with four digits. At that time, the call-in user will be unmuted and asked to identify themselves by stating their first name, their last name, and their address. And for the record, all public comments, not just some, but all, whether they have called in via phone or read into the record by the clerk, are limited to the three-minute rule that the Commission has adopted by ordinance in the city. Again, for the purposes of record, this is a virtual meeting, virtual concept, under Emergency Ordinance Number 1952, founded in state law under the Governor's Executive Order 20-52, extended by Executive Order Number 20-316, furthered by state statute, Chapter 252, and is conducted in the context of all provisions being made under the Public Records Law and the Sunshine Law, Chapter 286 and Chapter 119, to allow the full panoply of access by members of the public under any circumstance, which this Commission has a rich and thorough history of accessing, whether it be in person or now by the virtual platform. That being said, Mayor and Commissioner, I think that the ground is set for the meeting. And if I can respond to questions, I'm happy to respond as things progress. Thank you for allowing me the time, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you, City Attorney. Very thorough.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Good, I heard you have an announcement, maybe?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to ask that if my colleagues could join us in a moment of silence. There were two passings that were very dear to me, and I'm certainly very dear to others. The first was Hiro Escobar. He's that elderly fellow that for 25 years cleaned the city hall. And, you know, he was the Hispanic fellow, and if you're late at night, probably have been into him. Wonderful man, good heart, always carried a smile. And it was very important to notice that he has since passed. The other would be a very, very dear loss to this city is Gerald Hard Mayor. He recently did pass. If many of us do know Gerard, he was actually one of my appointees for the committee Hurricane Preparation Ad hoc Committee. Many of us know Gerard for being deeply involved with much of the city activities. You know, he grew up in Scranton. He was, you know, Air Force pilot. He was a graduate of Harvard, Yale, and the University of Miami. And more importantly, I have the opportunity, please reach out to his wonderful wife, Terry. They have been married for 30 years. I know this is very tough for her, and we give great thanks for her allowing us to have the time with him. So if we may have a moment of silence, Mr. Mayor, I thank you very kindly.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's have a moment of silence, please. Thank you all very much, and thank you, Commissioner Good.
Mayor, this is Commissioner Castillo.
Commissioner Castillo, go ahead. Thank you very much. I, let me just very briefly take a moment to thank State Representative Robin Bartleman, and also the people at the Cooper, at Century Village, and also the corporate office at Century Village, for all that they've done to respond to our requests for vaccination at Century Village. A thousand residents of that, of that community have already been vaccinated as of this morning. They are well on their way to reaching their goal of 3,000. I wish they could have done more, but they didn't have more vaccine. And I know that Representative Bartleman has hit the ground running, just having been sworn in practically, but she's hit the ground running in terms of doing these vaccinations in her district. And I hope, and I expect that they will, that those locations will expand. Today, I had the opportunity to join in the conference call of the Emergency Management Coordinating Council. And they are going to be turning even more aggressively to cities to partner. The state is looking to partner even more aggressively with cities to create vaccination locations. Of course, the success of that effort is dependent on the state being able to provide enough vaccine so that these operations stay in business. But I hadn't had a chance to get a response from City Manager Dodge. I know that Tracy Jackson was going to reach out to the state today to make sure that there was enough vaccine. Many residents in West Pines and certainly throughout the city are eager to get vaccinated. And I know that Coral Springs and other cities have already put together cities with medical directors, because that apparently is a criteria that's important to the, understandably, to the Health Department. Mr. Dodge, are we prepared if the state asks us and we have insurance of inventory of vaccine to create several programs citywide that would allow our seniors and the other eligible people, as it comes, to get vaccinated?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dodge?
Yes, we've been working on a couple of different directions. One, of course, as you know, we've been working with the local Memorial Hospital in providing a facility for them to set up a location for vaccinations. However, that has been put on hold due to the lack of vaccine that is available. We've also been in communication with the State Department of Emergency Management, and the response that we received from them was very much the same. They have no assurance as to vaccine becoming available. However, we will work with either the Department of Health or local hospital in securing those locations to do so. I had an opportunity to review, to actually view, one of the locations, and it's quite an undertaking in regards to the size of the facility that's needed and the number of employees that are needed to make this happen. So as it progresses and we find out more information as to availability of vaccine, we will bring that back to the Commission's attention as to how to address this.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge.
Very much appreciated. We look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. I was all set to, hold on, Commissioner. I was all set to say that we were going to have vaccines Tuesday at a place decided. And unfortunately, if you can believe it, there's not enough vaccine. Just hard to believe.
Yeah.
And with Century Village, I also want to thank Commissioner Beam Fur. I've been getting a lot of emails, and he's been very helpful in presenting as well. Commissioner Sykle?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. And while I don't want to take anything away from my colleague Good on his request for a moment of silence, I also was going to request a moment of silence. And Jerry Mayor was one of the names that I was going to ask for. So thank you, colleague, for bringing that up. Certainly a very special, special man. But unfortunately, Mayor, I need to add two other names to that list that I would ask for a moment of silence for. We recently lost, and you all have known him for a number of years, Al Malouf Senior passed away at the ripe old age of 92. And also, another one of our residents who was very active and was always advocating for their community was Ron Dover, 71 years old. And he also passed away. And so I would just ask that, again, all of the names, and I'm sure we all have other names that we could think of that, you know, would want to have a moment of silence for them. So we would ask for all of those that have passed recently, that we, as a city, would have a moment of silence for all of them. Mayor, if we could?
Thank you, Commissioner. And let's all bow and pray to a moment of silence, please. Thank you all.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Mayor, I'm sorry, before we go, I have one other, if I could?
Commissioner Sykle?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On a really, you know, on an uplifting note, I guess, for something. You know, we're always so very proud of what our young folks do and how they, we're able to watch their journey as they become young adults and very civic-minded and, you know, doing what's right, not just for themselves, but for their families and their community. And I would like to bring attention, if I could, Mayor, to a young lady who is a resident of our city, and her name happens to be Savannah Broderston. You all may know her father, Brian and Annie. They've been very active through the community. And I would like to just read very quickly, it's just a few sentences, Mayor, if I could, from Ms. Savannah Broderston, who is working on her Gold, her Girl Scout Gold Award project. And this is what she wrote for us. "I am currently working on my Girl Scout Gold Award project, and I'd like to tell you what it's about. I will be creating a closet full of donated formal wear, business casual wear, and party wear for students in our Pembroke Pines community. It will be located at Trinity Lutheran Church. My goal is to fill the void in our local high school and give students the opportunity to be able to go to a school dance, a job interview, or a school competition. I want to make sure that students don't miss out on important events because their family didn't have the funds or couldn't afford to get them the clothing that they would need for that occasion. I am naming this project Kathy's Closet, both spelled with a K, after my late great aunt Kathy. My Aunt Kathy unfortunately passed away in December 2014 from breast cancer. She was always the happiest person in the room and had an impact on each and every young person. She fostered some of her nieces, nephews, and great nephews. She had a love of family and made friends feel like they were family as well. She loved to dance and play with her granddaughters. Kathy loved butterflies and the color purple. She is, we will be collecting men's dress shirts, ties, and dress pants, women's blouses, skirts, dresses, and formal gowns or dresses. Also, men's and women's shoes. This effort will benefit high school students in our Pembroke Pines community. And you can contact Savannah at, and I will give you the email for anyone who is interested, but you can go on kathyscloset, K-A-T-H-Y-S-K-L-O-S-E-T-T-L-C, at gmail dot com." So it's kathysclosett-tlc. And I think this, Mayor, is a very worthwhile project that for any of us that might be able to assist in this collection and the drop-off being at the Trinity Lutheran Church. I think, again, very, very proud of this young lady. And she is truly a fine example of a Pembroke Pine person and one of our young people, setting a great example of what we do here in the city of Pembroke Pines, which is to make sure that everyone is accounted for, everyone is respected, and where we can help, we step up and always step up to the plate and do so. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to bring this to our attention. Normally, she would have been able to come to City Hall and make a presentation on her own, but days are a little bit different now, so we do it in a different way, but still try to get the message out. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other announcements?
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Again, Happy New Year all. I first want to thank City Manager Dodge, Chief Justino, and the entire, the entire team who have been working diligently on this vaccination support. I spoke with the administration in late December. I wanted to ensure that all of our condo communities had an equal opportunity. We know that Director Moskowitz is doing the best he can. I believe that the rollout in Tamarack and Deerfield a week ago, they learned a lot, hence some of the slowdown as far as the rollout that could possibly come to Pembroke Pines. Next week, with the new administration being sworn in, there's a goal to have 100 million people in 100 days. And I hope that the, that the vials of vaccine, for those who wish to get it, becomes more readily available. Secondly, Commissioner Sykle, thank you for recognizing Savannah. The Broderston family, they were here before there was a Pembroke Pines. If y'all recall, about four years ago or so, the Broderston family donated back the original, one of the original two firearms that protected our city, and that firearm is now in the fourth floor of our police department. So we're talking now about a fourth-generation Broderston who continues to give back to our community. And let's do, let's do what we can to support them, given that they've supported us for, you know, so many decades. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Griesdorf.
Mr. Mayor, if you will, City Attorney here?
City Attorney?
Thank you. Just for the record, apparently there's a bit of a malaprop in the phone number access code. For the record, it is 1-408-418-9388. There's a bit of a typographical diversion. It's 1-408-418-9388. For those who might have the previous number, that is the correct number, and access is freely available if you dial it. So thank you, Mayor and Commission. Appreciate the indulgence.
Thank you, City Attorney. Yesterday, I had the extreme pleasure of swearing in six of our greatest police department in the world, six promotions, and it was just unbelievable. Just, I'm always so proud to do that, and I don't have to tell you what a great police department we have. So Chief Justino, Chief Shimpino, would you like to have a little, a couple of minutes here, Chief?
Good morning, Mayor, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Can everybody hear me?
We can.
Yes, sir.
First thing I want to do is try to share my screen. And while I'm doing that, I just want to take a moment and say that, you know, as with everything, the pandemic causes new ways to do things. We adapt and overcome, and we continue to move forward. So as the mayor alluded to yesterday, we did promote six people to leadership positions. And while it had to be done under, on low attendance and tight restrictions for their own family, and as you know, had it normally been at the commission chambers with all of you there in support, we usually pack that place with fellow officers that want to be there for it. So it's unfortunate that they did not get that full experience. But what I want to do is just give them a couple minutes of recognition. And also, it's, you know, clearly important that you all know who the leaders are in your police department as we continue to evolve and grow as an agency. So let me put this up. Hopefully, it's going to go.
Yeah, we can see it, Chief.
All right, let me see if I can get it to be in a regular slide. Good? All right, so what I'd like to do is I'm just going to show you their pictures so that when you see them around, and some of them you're already going to know, but when you see them around, you'll, you'll know who they are and what they've done to get to the positions that they're in now. So quick summary, we promoted three officer, two officers and a detective to the rank of sergeant. We promoted two sergeants to the rank of captain, and we promoted one captain to the rank of major. So the first individual you're going to see is Field Training Officer Dave Valdaires. Dave joined our department in January of 2007. During his career, he served as a patrol officer, a field training officer, a member of our SWAT team. And prior to joining us here at Pines, he spent two years with the North Miami Police Department. Field Training Officer Valdaires holds an Associate of Arts degree from Miami-Dade College. He has completed hundreds of hours in specialized training courses to include several instructor certifications. And during his career, he's received numerous department commendations and letters of appreciation from the community. So he has been promoted to the rank of sergeant. This next individual is Detective Azu Thomas. Detective Thomas joined our department in April of 2012. And during his career- Detective Thomas joined our department in April of 2012, and during his career, he has served in the following positions. He's served as a Patrol Officer, a Crime Suppression Team Officer, a Detective in the General Crimes Unit, and also as a Technical Officer on our SWAT team. Detective Thomas has completed college-level coursework towards a degree, and throughout his career, completed hundreds of hours of specialized law enforcement training. He's also received numerous commendations and thank-you letters from the public and others. He has been promoted to the rank of Sergeant. This officer is Officer Joel Curesma. Officer Curesma joined our department in November of 2007, and during his career, he served as a Patrol Officer and also as a member of our SWAT team. He's earned an Associate of Arts degree from Miami-Dade College, and throughout his career has completed hundreds of hours of specialized law enforcement training. He's also received numerous awards and commendations, to include the prestigious Life Saving Award. And he's also received numerous thank-you letters from the public and others. He has been promoted to the rank of Sergeant. This is Sergeant Rich Barnes. Many of you may recognize him. He has, up until today, been running our training unit, and it's a fantastic training unit. Sergeant Rich Barnes joined the department in September of 2002. During his career, he's served in the following positions. He's been a Patrol Officer, a Field Training Officer, a Crime Suppression Team Officer. He's been a member of the Crisis Response Team and a Training Officer. Then, in June of 2016, he was promoted to the rank of Sergeant. And while in this capacity, he's served as a Patrol Sergeant, and most recently, as the Training Unit Sergeant. Sergeant Barnes is currently pursuing a Bachelor of Arts in Emergency Management from Union Institute University. In addition, he has completed hundreds of hours in specialized training and leadership courses to include instructor-level certification courses. Over the course of his career, he's received numerous individual and unit commendations, as well as thank-you letters from the public. He is also the recipient of the prestigious Life Saving Award. Sergeant Barnes was promoted to Captain. This is Sergeant Daryl Curtis, who joined our department in September of 1999, and before joining us, he was serving as a Corrections Officer with the Florida Department of Corrections. During his career, he's served in the following positions: as a Patrol Officer, a Crime Suppression Team Officer, a Gang Task Force Member. In October of 2004, he was promoted to the rank of Sergeant. While in this capacity, he has served as a Patrol Sergeant, a General Investigation Sergeant, the Special Victims Unit Sergeant, the Crime Scene Unit Supervisor, a Field Force Supervisor. He's been a member of Broward Sheriff's Office Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. He was an FBI Task Force Member, and most recently, he's served as our Sergeant of the Robbery/Homicide Unit. Sergeant Curtis has completed over 80 college credit hours, and he's completed courses from Force Science, the Southern Police Institute's Command Officer Development Course, Nova Southeastern University's Executive Leadership Program, FBI Leaders Supervisory Leadership Institute, and the Public Safety Leadership Academy. In addition, he has completed hundreds of hours of additional specialized training and leadership courses. He has received numerous individual and unit commendations throughout his career, as well as thank-you letters from the public. And lastly, many of you are going to recognize this gentleman. This was Captain Al Ziquez. Captain Al Ziquez joined the police department in July of 1996, and during his career, he served in the following positions: as a Patrol Officer, a Field Training Officer, a DUI Enforcement Instructor, a Human Diversity Instructor, Crisis Response Team Member, and a General Crimes Detective. Upon his promotion to the rank of Sergeant, he served as a Patrol Sergeant, a Crisis Response Team Supervisor, an Investigations Bureau Sergeant overseeing the Anti-Terrorism Unit, General Crimes Division, Special Operations Unit, Auto Theft Unit, and the Vice Intelligence and Narcotics Unit. Then, upon his promotion to the rank of Captain, he served as a Patrol Captain, the Support Services Division Captain, and the Administrative Division Captain. In addition, he has served as the police department's primary public information officer, overseeing the Office of Communication to include social media. Captain Ziquez has earned a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice, Leadership, and Management from Union Institute University, and is a graduate of the Southern Police Institute's Command Officer Development Course, a graduate of the Nova Southeastern University and Broward Sheriff's Office Executive Leadership Program, a graduate of the 269th Session of the FBI National Academy. He's completed hundreds of hours in specialized training and leadership courses. And over the course of his career, he's received numerous individual and unit commendations and thank-you letters from the public and others, and twice, he has been the recipient of the prestigious Life Saving Award, and he's also received the Administrative Excellence In addition, he served as a police union representative and also has served on the Police and Fire Pension Board as a trustee. So, with these six individuals, Mayor and Commissioners, I have great confidence that I can present them to you, to the city administration, to our Pembroke Pines Police Department family, and to the residents of the city of Pembroke Pines as they enter these new leadership roles and continue to move our great agency forward with everything that is to come, challenges, successes, in the future. So, I appreciate the moment of time, so that I could at least put this on the record for them. I appreciate your support of our agency always, and I look forward to a return to normalcy where we can do this in person. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Chief. Well done, and congratulations to all, just making our police department even better. Okay, our second presentation, the Commission Auditor will present the Risk Assessment and Audit Plan for fiscal year 2021.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the Commission. Happy New Year. It's a pleasure to be here. I have with me this evening Eddie Castaneda, and Eddie is the Senior Manager and the Engagement Manager related to this audit. He will be overseeing all the individual projects that we do, and this year's kind of exciting for me because we transferred Eddie down to the Fort Lauderdale office, so Eddie now is in charge of all of our South Florida engagements, and Eddie's been with the firm for about 12 years now, and kind of grew up in the firm, and he's one of my top managers in the firm, and as a matter of fact, I'm going to let him present the audit plan this evening. So, Mr. Castaneda, would you like to take over?
Sure. You should have stopped recording. You're making me blush, Dan, with all that high praise. Good evening, Commissioners. As Dan said, my name's Eddie Castaneda. I'm the Audit Manager for the City of Pembroke Pines Internal Auditor, here to present our Risk Assessment and Audit Plan for fiscal year 2021. Just a high overview of the projects that we have coming forth in this current fiscal year. One is the IT Annual Review. This is an annual project that we do. We monitor the city's IT's infrastructure. This year, we anticipate a more in-depth analysis into this area as the city is currently undergoing a new IT software implementation for their financial software and also affecting other departments, so we're going to delve into that as well. Another part of our Annual Review is a follow-up of prior-year reports. This is just a basic progress where we look at all the reports that we've issued in the prior year with any observations or recommendations, and just find out what the status is, if they can be cleared or they're still needing to be implemented. Annual Review, as well as the Investment Committee's Minutes, that is, they meet about four or five times a year, and that committee is responsible for overseeing the city's investments, returns on investments, and we review the minutes to ensure that any information is getting disseminated to the Commission as needed. We also do a physical observation on a rotational basis of the city's charter schools. This involves a fixed asset testing, spot checking, and making sure that controls are in place to track not only the city's assets, but also smart bond assets that the city has some compliance requirements with the Broward County regarding smart bond funds spent in schools. Some new projects this current year, one is the Recreation and Cultural Arts Review. This is just a review of the department's internal controls, cash handling procedures, and operations to ensure compliance with city policies and procedures. Another is a grant compliance analysis on a rotational basis. We take a grant compliance audit on city grants that may have not been selected for audit as part of the external audit, single audit. Also, this year, there will be some in-depth review if the city has received any CARES Act funds. We want to ensure that the city's in compliance with that because those dollars, as everyone knows, is highly regulated and will be looked at in this current year and in the future years as the city expends those CAREY Act funds. We will also do a analysis of the city's code compliance. This is just benchmarking the city's code compliance violation fees, also review of internal controls and cash handling procedures with that department. We will also, we are currently in our planning stages of doing the Building Division Review. Part of this review is verifying licenses and requirements, cash receipt testing, a fee structure analysis, as well as the IT component related to online permitting and online payment. Lastly, as part of, I should have mentioned at the top, it's part of our Annual Review, as well as we review agenda items prior before getting them on the agenda. We review them for accuracy and compliance with any procurement issues that any agenda item may or may not have, and that's an ongoing basis throughout the year. Like I said, it was very high level. I've opened it up now to the Commission, should they have any questions or have any input on the audit plan. This is not, this plan relies on the input of the Commission, obviously, to, I want to remind every Commissioner here that we are your arm. We do work for the Commission, and you could steer us in any direction or project that you would want us to take a look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for a very good report. Commissioners, any questions for our Commission Auditor?
Vice Mayor Schwartz.
Vice Mayor Schwartz.
Eddie, thank you. Good evening. The flowchart, as far as project timelines goes, I see that some are being done on a monthly basis. Do you have a specific individual working, specific breakout projects?
For the annual ones, that would be myself, the ones that we do constant monitoring, like you said, on the flowchart on a monthly basis, though, as well as our IT Auditor, Mihal Gurgech, he does the monitoring throughout the year for the IT section of the plan.
And who's handling the building and recreation review?
I am overseeing it, and as well, we have a couple of staff people who will be assisting on that.
The Commission had some discussion last year regarding renewal or RFP building services, and we deferred action until the review was completed by your office, and you and I haven't had a conversation regarding this, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, has any other Commissioner reached out to you regarding the Building Department?
Commissioner Castillo had reached out, just a question as to what the status is on that project.
How long ago was that?
That was Tuesday.
So, is there, is it going to take you three months to complete this project?
Currently, as I told Commissioner Castillo, we have had preliminary discussions with the CGA, and a request list has been issued. They are gathering our preliminary requests for that, and I had told Commissioner Castillo that we are anticipating the completion of the audit end of February, early March. Can you hear me? I'm hearing some static.
Yeah, someone's got their mic on.
Yep. We can hear you.
Okay, great. The thing with these projects is, we like to, it's a general request list, and we let the information kind of guide us as to where we want, what avenues we want to pursue. So, for the timeline, I would, for a project like this, I would believe two to three months would be a safe assumption, just through experience and the back and forth and data requesting and testing.
Right. There was, I mean, there was quite a bit of discussion regarding building services from a multitude of different folks. Have you had the opportunity to review those live Commission meetings to get a sense of what direction you would like to go in without being prompted?
I was on, I was listening to last month's meeting, and I know there was a healthy discussion on that, and I did hear citizen comments, and that kind of, you know, alerted me to some areas that we might want to pursue with them. That's why we incorporated, I know there was some discussion on the online permitting software that CGA currently uses, so we will incorporate an IT review of that section as well. But as I said earlier, we're waiting to get the information back to kind of develop procedures.
Okay. So, right now, we're using Inkforce, and within the next two years, we're going to have our own system. Are you going to be reviewing the advantages and disadvantages of Inkforce, the cost to the city, the performance metrics, that sort of thing?
Correct. Like I said, it's in the preliminary stages. That is the goal, to do a review on that, as to how it integrates with the city, because right now, it's unknown. We, like I said, we're in the data gathering process, so we're not, we're unclear on how in-depth it is or integrated into the city's financial software is, or if it's an outside reporting. We just don't know at this current moment.
Do you have any, do you have any plans on reviewing other cities who may have a different management team or a different software? How are we going to be able to compare how we're doing versus, you know, the general community in Broward?
Well, as part of this is, we always do benchmarking within the city with other municipalities and the surrounding areas, as well as municipalities that would be comparable to the city of Pembroke Pines in terms of population and taxable value, which the Auditor General actually promotes. So, we would do some benchmarking on the fee structure, definitely. However, if you would want us, if the Commission would want us to kind of take a look at other management, other structures that are set up like the city of Pembroke Pines where they outsourced their Building Department operations to an outside firm, we could definitely take a look at that and see how it compares.
Yeah, just one more question, Mayor. I mean, Eddie, I think that, I mean, for, it's my belief, and of course, it takes the majority of us to provide you direction, but I think the substance of our conversation was, we kind of wanted to know that information, what you just mentioned. But another thing that was brought up in the discussion is market rate rental rates, what the city is currently charging for space as compared to what it's like throughout Broward County. Are we competitive? Are we average, below average, above average for rates? So, I would, that's information that I need in order to be able to make a well-informed decision on how to move forward. Without that, I'm going to be at a loss. So, Mayor, I don't want to make a motion or anything like that, because I kind of just want to give everyone the chance to weigh in, but it's my general sense is, that's what we- what we were expecting from at least the administration, was promising to bring that back. So I think if the commission auditor can do that in tandem, and let's see where, you know, let's see where everything kind of falls in place. That's all I have.
All right. All right, Vice Mayor, thank you.
Can I have a follow-up to Commissioner Schwartz? I just want to make sure that it's, I'm understanding you correctly. This is Eddie Castaneda, Audit Manager for this. Is, are those are two separate projects? Are you talking rental rates that would have to do with the Building Department?
Building, if there are other cities with an outsourcing arrangement, what is their rent, their rental rate, that sort of thing, right? It's kind of where I'm coming from.
Got it.
Well, if you don't mind, Vice Mayor, Eddie, if you can get with the manager, then the manager can give us a presentation as to what the focus is. I think that'd be better.
Great.
Mayor, Mayor, this is Cyple.
Ms. Cyple, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. And Mr. Castaneda, thank you, thank you for that, and Commissioner Schwartz, good, good point you brought up. But along with that, the, the market rates on the rental properties, sometimes our agreement with these rental or with these companies to provide services, it's not just property rental, there are other things that are involved in making that contract and setting the value of that contract, such as equipment, such as vehicles, such as benefits, different things. So would that also be something that would have to, I, I think that's something that would need to be somehow information that we would need as well, so that we would understand the entire contract, entire agreement, and what it does, what it costs, all of that. I think that there are many factors that also need to be brought up when, when you come back to us and say, this is how this fares against, you know, other, other cities or counties, or however, however you choose to compare it to. But I want to make sure that when we do that, that, that we are looking, you know, sort of as close as we can to apples and apples, so that we have a fair, but all of these items need to be part of it. If it's part of the contract, it needs to be somehow in your report to us, at least of mind.
All right, thank you. Any other questions to the auditor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Commissioner Good.
Ms. Good.
I, I, I would love to engage a lot of dialogue with this, however, this is a, a regular commission meeting, which I, I believe would be unfair to the other participants at this meeting. You know, I, I did look over the plan, I do find many of the things that are proposed to be very, very important to the city. I do, however, find other things that could be a part of, of their review as well, and I really, really would like to have that opportunity, to have that dialogue with my colleagues, as well as the auditor, as we talk about, you know, things that should be doing for us, because the auditor is no different than the city attorney or the city manager to us. I prefer to receive information direct from the auditor, not be vetted anywhere else, but from the auditor, as they report directly to the commission. But I also would like for the auditor to also consider a opportunity for a workshop for us. Let's really do this in a right way. Let's have conversate. We just generated conversation on one single issue, but there are other issues as well too that we should all be talking about, and that way, we can give the auditor clear direction on other things. The things they presented us, to us tonight, some of those are annual, they're regular, they have to be done, but I think that there's more that, that would be very valuable to us, for the auditor to, to put on their task list, so to say. So I, I don't know when that would be appropriate through the mayor, to the auditor, but, you know, how could we arrange some sort of, a more of a workshop format as opposed to bringing the plan on a regular commission meeting for better dialogue between the city commission and the auditor?
Yeah, that's a good point, Commissioner Good. That's why I say, let's have the manager set up a workshop for us, and we can go on with it. All good information.
Castillo, comment?
Mr. Manager, can you do that?
Mr. Mayor, yes, one of my items under City Managers' Report tonight, we keep getting requests from commission for workshop items, and I have a list of about four or five. We need to set those dates and make a decision, want to do that, and we'll add the auditor dialogue as another one of those items, but hopefully tonight, we can start setting those dates for those workshop meetings.
Thank you. Commissioner Castillo?
Thank you. And I want to thank you, Eddie, for responding to my email. My concern was when you were going to be finished with, with, with this review. And my, my comment would be, if, if, all things being equal with your scheduling of, of projects, if this one could get done faster rather than later, I'd appreciate it, because there's a vote that's sort of hanging on it, and several of my colleagues understandably want to see that report before they vote. So it's, if there's a way to, if there, if there's a way to bring that one in for a landing sooner, this commissioner would be greatly appreciative. But there's also a related issue in terms of workshops, and I'm sure, and, and that kind of thing. I had asked for a, and the commission agreed to direct the, the city manager to come back with us with a full, recommended format for a finance committee that would include residents as well. And I think that their input is at least as, as essential as our own, and I look forward to Mr. Dodge bringing that back when he's ready. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, George. We appreciate the report. Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Any other items to the agenda, Commissioner? How about at the request of the public?
No items at the request of the public, but there are comments from the Public Comments Portal for items when appropriate, at appropriate time.
Announcing a Board and Committee appointments, Commissioner Good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do appreciate that. I am very excited to have the opportunity to, to appoint Mr. Rafael Barrero to the, to the Economic Development Board. I, I can tell you that Mr. Barrero has been serving on the Diversity and Culture Board and has done a stellar job. Mr. Barrero, I will say, recently did have a baby as first, and he has added to his resume a babysitter, so he is babysitting tonight, so we'll try to get through this a little bit quickly, so that he can maybe speak a few words. But I do want it to be very clear, Mr. Barrero is a, is a 14-year resident with the city. He lives in the Quincy Park community. He is a vice president within the banking industry, and I can tell you and attest to the fact that Mr. Barrero has a very bright mind. He does represent a generation that will be soon taking the reins to lead this city into even greater futures. So, Mr. Mayor, it's my pleasure to appoint Mr. Barrero to the Economic Development Board, and if you could give him an opportunity to speak, I do believe he may be online.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Barrero, are you online?
Indeed, I am. First off, congratulations. I'm sorry.
Congratulations.
Thank you. First off, congratulations to the six officers who were just promoted. As we all know, having a trusted professional police force helps to economic, economic stability and growth of any municipality. As to my appointment, I would like to thank Commissioner Good for this opportunity to serve the city, its businesses and its residences, residents, I'm sorry. It, it's my hope that my expertise in, in banking and different aspects of finance will be of assistance to our local economy, especially, especially our retail and food service sectors, as we slowly begin to recover from the nightmare that we all call 2020. So thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Barrero. It's going to be a pleasure working with you. Okay, consent agenda, items one through 23. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Good has polls. Sorry, I yield.
Commissioner Good, give me your first one.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull number eight.
Okay.
And number 15.
Okay, any others?
Cyple?
Hold on. Any other, Commissioner Good?
That is all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Commissioner Cyple, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought, I thought you were finished with them. Item 23.
Any others? Any others, Commissioner?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, any other polls? Any, Commissioner? All right, nearing none. City Clerk, if you would, if we could have a motion to approve items one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22.
No.
Moved by Commissioner Cyple, is there a second?
Second.
Second by, what was that, the Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, let's remember, call out your name, so I know who it is. All right, discussion. Hearing none. Call the roll, please, City Clerk.
Commissioner Cyple?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Matt Warden?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Good, your item eight, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item eight. Motion to approve the minutes of the virtual regular commission meeting of Wednesday, December 16, 2020.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Cyple, second. Go ahead, Commissioner Good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to bring attention to item 18 of the December 16 meeting, with the page 10. Item 18. And that item was an item that was pulled off the consent by Commissioner Good, and there was no discussion. However, the vote was very clear that I, Commissioner Good, voted no on that item. I did not vote yes. This item currently shows a unanimous vote of affirmative. This item was vote, was, was twice I voted no for clarity, and Mayor even clarified it was a 4-1 vote, and it says 5-0. So this is the fifth time that my vote has been inaccurately recorded in the minutes of the meeting, and I just want to say to Mr. City Manager, this is starting to cause me great concern, because again, this is the fifth time. Had I not paid attention to reading everything on, on this agenda, I would not have picked that up. So I would like to also point out, on item number 15, which would be page, more particular, page 15, that there's a, a reference in the notes that basically states, Commissioner Good requested administration provide the accounting documentation for the last five years on record. This was for Calvin Giordano and Associates, five-year agreement. I, I just want to make it clear, I, I, I do not yet have that. So I would have thought that that would have been provided to myself and to my colleagues in regards to this very important matter that other people have interest in as well. So again, I reiterate, information has not been provided, but I, I would like to make a motion to table this item until records are corrected. I would normally say it's okay, let's just go with notation, but I don't have the confidence that I see the record, would like to see the record corrected before I vote on it.
So that's my motion. Here's a motion. Table is in second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cyple. Discussion on a motion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please, City Clerk. Commissioner Good?
No. Oh, yes, yes. Yes, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Relax, long day.
All right, we're, we're voting, we're voting on deferring, correct?
Yes, we are.
A positive vote will defer the item. That is correct, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Commissioner Good said yes four times, Commissioner Cyple once, and I say yes once on this deferral.
All right. Hold on, hold on. We are not deferring the item. We are tabling the item. There is a difference. Let's get serious about this. Commissioner, I mean, City Clerk, continue the rule, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor Warden?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Good, item 15, please.
Yes, item, item 15 is motion to approve the First Amendment to lease agreement between City of Pembroke Pines New Singular Wireless LLC to add four additional five-year renewal terms to the agreement beyond the original term, extending its total term to September 30, 2043. EU number 812044-9950, Pembroke Pines, Florida.
Okay, is there a second?
Second. Castillo.
What was that?
Castillo, second.
Commissioner Castillo seconds the motion. Commissioner Good?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I, I just want to say that this is something that many people are not aware of, that the city does have lease agreements with telecommunications companies for them to put cellular powers in, and, and so that way, we can continue to be very well with our communication. I, I, I want to give staff extreme kudos for doing an extremely good job at negotiating these contracts. The next four items, I only pulled the one, are all related to the same issue, which is to extend the contract for about essentially another 20 years. I, I've, I've read through them, I've seen the compensation, I've seen the escalators, and again, I just can't, can't say enough about how well the city commission, the administration did with regards to negotiating these contracts. Kudo, kudo, kudos. Very, very good. I think it's important for the public to know how well this type of arrangements with the communication companies are, are being done with the city. I just wanted to ask one question. There is, there's a, there's a right to audit clause, because there is a 50% revenue share with, with these telecommunications companies for what they call colocations. And, you know, a tower can have one, two, three, five, however many they can put on there, and they are listed here, the number of colocations on each of these towers, but I have a question of, you know, what is, have we ever audited these colocations per tower? Or do we just accept the fact that the telecommunications company is giving us accurate information?
Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the telecommunications companies do notify us because of permitting requirements, whether it be electrical or whatever, when they add these, and the audit portion would be handled through the Finance Department regarding, number one, that they are in fact paying us, and number two, that they have in fact installed them. Now, if your question is, do we physically go out there and look to see if they were installed, or if there were more than one, quite honestly, I can't answer that tonight, but I will, I will get that information to you.
Okay. And very good. And the reason why I say that, you know, there are five locations, and three of them have only one, which is... and three of them have only one, which is, uh, it seems a little unusual to me. I typically, two, three, or four are, 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 are something, you know, familiar with, but, um, yeah, if you could look at that, but, again, tremendous job for somebody who understands these things, it's, you all did a really good job, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm ready to go.
Further, further discussion. City Clerk, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyple?
Yes.
Mayor Warden?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Ron, item twenty-three, Commissioner Cyple.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve port and rescue truck as the city standard for the fire department, and also approve the purchase two port and rescue trucks from the sole course vendor, tactical rescue vehicles in the amount not to, not to exceed, not to exceed six hundred and six thousand four hundred and forty dollars pursuant to section thirty-five point eighteen per N C, per N three of the city's code of ordinances.
Okay, is there a second?
Second. Commissioner Good.
Second by Commissioner Good. Go ahead, Commissioner Cyple.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, I just have a question, um, specifically to the city manager, if I could.
All right.
City manager, I just, uh, with adding these, these two trucks, my question would be, um, are we now, um, uh, are all of our stations being, uh, equally staffed and equally equipped to cover the, um, the necessary uh, calls and calls that they get, you know, on a regular basis?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner, uh, Mr. Dodge?
Yes, well, uh, when you say equally staffed, they cannot be because the volume, uh, or the number of pieces of equipment is based upon the calls. For example, uh, we have a Century Village, uh...
That was part of my question, was I understood that that, they couldn't all be equally. I said based upon their needs and their calls. That was my, that was my part of the question.
Based upon their needs and the call, yes, Commissioner, they are.
Okay, and so that would be, we are now, when we have these two, to help fill out what we have, correct?
Well, the two where they are assigned aren't filling out anything, they are replacement. Currently, all of our stations are, uh, staffed appropriately, uh, at all locations. And the one location you mentioned to me, uh, is in fact, uh, does have a unit there even prior to these two coming online.
Great, thank you, thank you, City Manager, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Further discussion. Hearing none, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Cyple?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Warden?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. This item reminds me of something, so if you don't mind me just interrupting. Uh, Monday, at the Mayor's Cafe, uh, older gentleman that comes in regularly, uh, didn't look good. So we went over to him and asked him if, how he was feeling, and he was really not responsive. So I called, as I do at time to time, nine-one-one. And, uh, I think before I hung up, the fire department was there with both a fire truck and a rescue truck. And I don't, I still don't know the status of this customer because they can't tell you. But I just have to tell you, time and time again, our fire department, kudos to them for being so responsive and professionally in the way they handle things. So I just want to bring that up and just recognize them. I mean, our police department, our fire department, great. Just proud of them.
They're fabulous. They're fabulous.
Okay. First reading ordinance is city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission, if you will. Item number twenty-four is a first reading. On the second reading, if we get to second reading, we'll be quasidu additional answer where there'll be sworn testimony. This is a first reading. It's a proposed ordinance, number twenty-twenty-one dash zero-one, is an ordinance of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending chapter one fifty-five, the comprehensive zoning code of the City of Pembroke Pines, by specifically amending section one fifty-five point zero twenty-seven entitled zoning map to rezone the approximate three point nine eight acre parcel of land generally located south of Pines Boulevard and east of two-hundred-and-second Avenue, located at two-zero-one-seven-zero Pines Boulevard, as more particularly described in exhibit A. Rezoning from the current zoning of B-two, that's referenced as the community business, to C-one, referenced as commercial for tract A. Allocating commercial flexibility to tract A in accordance with Broward County Administrative Rule, rezoning from the current zoning of B-two, that's community business, to A-one, referenced as limited agricultural for tract B, subject to the recordation of a declaration of restrictive covenants attached here too, as exhibit B made a part hereof. Providing for codification, providing for conflict severability, and providing for an effective date. This is item number twenty-four, references twenty-twenty-one dash zero-one, with a motion to be on the floor for discussion. Thank you, Mayor and Commission, next meeting will be quasi.
Thank you, City Attorney, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Commissioner Good.
Commissioner Good, motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Cyple seconds the motion. Discussion on a motion.
Yes, Castillo.
Commissioner Castillo, go ahead.
Thank you, uh. Mr. Mealy, did, uh, I have a question for you, but did you want to make a presentation? Or did Mr. Stam want to make a presentation on this item?
So I, this, this is Dennis Mealy, can you hear me?
We can.
So, so we do have some slides to show, I can do that, or Commissioner, if you'd like me to answer your question first, I can do that.
Well, let's, um, let, let me get, let me get right to it so that, uh, so that we're clear. So my understanding is that the zoning for this parcel, which is basically an out parcel, somebody, somebody's, uh, somebody's, uh, make a noise. Thank you. Uh, my understanding is that this is basically a parcel, sort of like an out parcel to the general shopping center on two-oh-two, uh, which fronts the Alhambra Homeowner Association. And the, uh, the request is for a tractor store, which is basically a, 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 a hardware store, though it's an amenity that is sort of specific to people who own large properties, and we have that in that area. Uh, the homeowner association at Alhambra, which is the HOA most impacted, voted six to one in favor of it because they prefer a one-story structure there over the multifamily structure that the, uh, owner, uh, could erect as of right. However, Mr. Mr. Mealy, they premise that on thick landscaping, buffering this building, uh, and the preserve, which stands between an empty lot right now and the homes. And they'd like for the developer to coordinate that landscaping plan with them as part of the, I guess, the, the site plan approval. So before we go any further, I need to ask whether or not that's something that, as a voluntary commitment, that's legally enforceable by the city, that you're prepared to make.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes, thank you. Uh, first of all, Commissioner, your understanding is correct. Uh, this property has been, uh, cleared and made available for development. Uh, it is basically the same setup as what you see next door in terms of the current zoning and everything. When I say next door, that's that three-story building that has retail on the ground floor and offices above. So it is our understanding that the homeowners association preference was to have this single-use, uh, single-story building instead of the alternative. And we, uh, appreciate that very much. In terms of landscaping, yes, as part of our site plan process, we will coordinate with your city staff and with the Alhambra HOA to make sure that everyone can see that we're doing a good buffer between our development and the homes.
So the next question has to do with hours of operation and with the activity that would be going on onsite. My understanding is that this facility, what, this store would close at approximately eight P M?
Uh, the basic hours are eight A M to eight P M.
And that, and that the, the, the prime time of operation isn't during, um, their experience, I should say, in operating is that they're really not a rush hour operation. In other words, it's, it doesn't behave like a residential community would in terms of traffic where there's a rush out, uh, during rush hour and a rush into the community during rush hour. Is that basically correct?
That is correct. We presented traffic data, uh, based on our experience at other tractor supply stores. And we showed that we have much less peak hour traffic, either morning or afternoon, than other uses that would go in this type of zoning. Secondly, our main time, our busiest day, is Saturday.
There was, there was, uh, there was some concern as to the proximity of this, uh, this was stated, uh, in social media, uh, proximity of this, uh, facility to where the eagles nest. But my sense is that where the eagle's nest is about, uh, half a mile or so west of this location, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Um, in fact, there are, uh, there's a large development between us and the eagle's nest location. That's the Walden Pond Development. So yes, it's, it's about a half a mile away.
It's Walden Lake, but yes, okay.
Walden, sorry.
No, it's fine. And, um, uh, there was also discussion about tractors being, uh, test-driven on this location, is that, is that what your client intends to do, to test drive tractors on this location?
No, there will be, first of all, we don't sell tractors, we sell supplies for tractors. But one of the things that came out on social media is we do sell A T Vs, but there is no test driving. If you buy an ATV, you load it up on your trailer or your truck, and you take it home. There's no test driving of any vehicles associated with this store.
Thank you.
Further discussion.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Good?
Commissioner Good, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just like to ask my colleague, Commissioner Castillo, uh, if his community predicated on the parameters that he just had discussion with, uh, Mr. Mealy are in support of this item and of the rezoning.
Commissioner Castillo?
I'm sorry, a colleague asked me a question, what was the question?
If, if your, uh, constituents are in support of the rezoning as, uh, you had, uh, predicated on the parameters you had discussed with Mr. Mealy.
They, they voted six to one to do it in that way. Uh, but if, if, if you don't mind, your, your, your comment just triggered something else. So really, what this is, is it's really not, well, it's a zoning change because it has to be, but it's really more like of a, of a variance to a zoning change in the sense that all that they're allowing is for the traffic store. They, they're not changing the underlying zoning, they're simply allowing the traffic store to sort of come in. Uh, is, uh, 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 City Attorney, is that generally the gist of this?
May I respond, Mr. Mayor? The answer is generally yes, and that's why I raised the issue about being quasi next time, just to put on the record under oath that that's in fact the, the pathway to get to the answer, that's correct.
So Commissioner Good, all of that was explained to the Ha- Alhambra Homeowner Associations, they took their vote, and they provided that in writing to the city.
Excellent. And thank you for, uh, outlining that, I think it, uh, makes great sense. Um, but it's
Further discussion.
Appreciate it.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
City Clerk, call a roll, please.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Vice Mayor, go ahead, question?
Um, I guess it'd be a question for Mr. Mealy, good evenings here. Um, Chapel Trail, directly across the street, are they outside the five-hundred-foot uh, notification and weigh-in requirements?
Um, um, good evening, Vice Mayor. We did send, uh, all of the homeowners association within five hundred feet letters. Uh, yes, Chapel Trail would be part of that, we offered a meeting, and they did not request one.
So and, and I apologize, Mr. Mealy, for, um, this whole discussion was about an HOA that a colleague lives in, but yet we don't know anything about Chapel Trail. Um, we've had other discussions in recent weeks about HOAs that live even further away from other projects that, um, that were addressed to. I, I just find this one to be, um, just not surprising, to be quite honest with you. Uh, Mayor, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, further discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
City Clerk, hold on.
The City Attorney. It's just the Attorney, Mr. Clerk.
I'm going to call for the vote for City Attorney.
Uh, you, if you do, Mr. Mayor, you need it, it's closing, if you have a conflict for the record, I'll be happy to help.
City Attorney, I'm aware of that when it comes to me.
Thank you, Mayor.
City Clerk, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyple?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Warden?
Uh, uh, Commissioner, uh, ladies and gentlemen, City Attorney, I'm going to recuse myself from this vote because family intervention. So I'm going to recuse myself from the vote. City Attorney, now you can elaborate.
Just briefly, Mayor and Commission, I was, uh, the mayor consulted with me as City Attorney. Uh, a family member may benefit from the vote that may occur either tonight and or on second reading. To that extent, under chapter one twelve, which is the statute governing public officials, including myself as the City Attorney, under section one twelve on thirty-one forty-three, which is the voting conflict section, uh, if the mayor, uh, so chooses and so announced the abstention on the record, uh, he will then not vote, the clerk will record an abstention. He will file a Form eight B vote conflict within fifteen days of tonight's discussion and decision. Uh, and to that extent, his vote will not be counted as a yes or no, but as an abstention for the record, and under Florida law, uh, public officials who are elected are allowed to debate the subject but not to vote on it. Whereas appointed officials cannot debate and cannot vote either. The mayor has followed the law in that regard, and to that extent, Mayor, that's the best answer I can give to you as the mayor of the City of Pembroke Pines. Thank you for the indulgence.
Thank you, City Attorney. So the motion passes, thank you all, and City Clerk, we'll go to item twenty-five, City Attorney, second reading ordinances.
And just for the record, the item twenty-four will be a second and final public hearing, where access by the public will be directly allowed under the statute and as well as under the city's code, under oath, as a quasidu additional proceeding. The next up, Mr. Mayor is number twenty, uh, twenty-five, correct? If I may read.
Thank you.
Is a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number twenty-twenty dash zero-six on second and final reading, where there is a public hearing. It is proposed ordinance number twenty-twenty zero-six is an ordinance of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending the future land use, infrastructure, and conservation elements of the City of Pembroke Pines Comprehensive Plan by specifically amending the city's ten-year water supply facilities work plan, that's a WSFWP, say that quickly, providing for compliance with the Florida statutes and the Florida Administrative Code, the F A C. Providing for codification, providing for conflicts, severability, finally, providing for an effective date. I, item number twenty-five, twenty-twenty dash zero-six on the floor for consideration. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Castillo moves it.
Don't move.
Castillo moves the item, is there a second?
Don't move.
Uh, who was, was that Commissioner Cyple?
Yes, Mayor.
Commissioner Cyple seconds the motion, discussion.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Good?
Commissioner Good for discussion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, you know, I, I, you know, these are necessary things that we do on a regular basis. Um, the only thing that I got, I got kind of a little focused on was on page two of the summary explanation and background. Bullet number four. It says that the city's propose water supply plan, project, water use needs for a ten-year period. The city is not proposing any alternative water supply projects since no shortage in supply are projected for the ten-year planning period. Uh, we had a, uh, an item at the last commission meeting that basically said we consumed all of our available water, which would, uh, necessarily require us to start considering alternative water supply plans because that's one of the things that we were talking about putting into a, uh, agreement with, uh, Bang, which is the, the company which wanted to consume, uh, basically the remaining available water that we had. So, uh, I'd like to have staff explain to me, why is it that, uh, we're saying that there is no, uh, projects or, uh, there is... projects or there is no shortage for the next, next 10-year planning period, why that wasn't addressed?
Mr. Mayor? I would like Mr. Stam and Mr. Cooper to respond to that question.
Mr. Stam first?
Yes.
Mr. Stam?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, I'll, I'll defer to John with the exact calculations, but it's my understanding at this moment in time, we haven't exceeded, although, um, should we continue down or expand the use at Bang, we may exceed. And I, and again, Mr. Cooper, if you could correct me on that, but that's where I thought we were, we stood in terms of the report. I know Mr. Stanbaugh's on the, on the, on the call also, who helped perform some of the analysis.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. This is John Cooper, utility director. Can you hear me all right?
We can hear you, Mr. Cooper.
Great, thank you. So the answer is that the Bang folks have not made a commitment. So we chose at the time of doing the water supply plan to not include that because there's no commitment. And what we did was we chose to submit it as you surmised. We think it's accurate. We think it's correct. And should Bang or anybody else make a commitment that impacts significantly that projection, we are prepared to make a revision to the 10-year water supply plan. We discussed it with South Florida, and we're prepared to do that, but we won't do it until we have commitment.
Okay, Mr. Cooper, thank you.
And, and thank you. And so when is the, the city, without anything triggering, anything necessary for us to be making a revision, when is the next time that we have to submit this plan, the water supply plan, on a normal basis? Is it every one year, every two years, every five years?
Uh, Mr. Stam, could you correct, give a correct answer? I'm only aware that it's due every 10 years.
I'm checking. Give me one moment, please.
Mayor Castillo, while they're checking, I'd like to be in the queue for a question when, when the time comes.
Okay. Commissioner Good, typically, um, when there's an update to the regional water supply plan, that will trigger a review by the city and compliance with the city. Um, and I believe there's also a 10-year commitment in there also, but a lot of this is tied to the regional water supply.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Castillo, you had a question?
Commissioner Good finished?
Yeah, I, I just want to make a, I'm sorry, thank you, Commissioner Castillo. I, um, so I, I just want to reiterate then, it is clearly with this knowledge that it's staff's recommendation to proceed with approving this item for submittal. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, that is correct. We, we've included everything that is in the current projects as well as users to date that are consistent with this plan. We do recommend approval.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Castillo?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I recall, the way I remember it was that if this thing with Bang goes over, administration's going to be contacting the state for a change in the permit. And I'm not sure, based on my experience, that a request like that has ever been all that difficult to get. But, I mean, I, I, I'm not speaking for the state, but I think that, I think that that was the plan. Wasn't that what I heard during the Bang presentation, that if, if in fact the, we, we, we were up against the permit limits, that administration was going to go back to the state and get a, an expanded permit limit?
Uh, John Cooper, sir, yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, so the reason it's, so the reason that we're not doing this now is because this submission is due, we don't have the commitment, and it can be amended at any time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm simply, I, I didn't ask that to be rhetorical. I asked it because I simply assumed that that's what, that's, that's, that's what it was. And so I'm thankful that we got the clarification. Okay.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none. Call a roll, please, on item 25.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Thunblum?
Yes.
Commissioner Good? Commissioner Good?
Commissioner Good?
Yes. The answer is yes. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
The answer is yes.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Number, Mayor and Commissioner, for the record, is, is 1955, 1955. Next up is 26.
Thank you, sir. Item 26, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Number 26 is a motion to pass proposed ordinance number 2020-20 on second and final reading. It is in fact an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending Chapter 34 of the city's Code of Ordinances entitled Employment Policies, creating a Section 34.185 entitled City Holidays, specifically recognizing Juneteenth as a city holiday, providing for conflicts, separability, and providing for an effective date. That's item number 2026, 2020-20 on the floor for consideration. Thank you, Mayor.
Don't move. Commissioner Good?
Second.
Commissioner Good moves the item. Is there a second?
Second.
Cyple, yes.
Commissioner Cyple seconds the motion. Discussion.
Yes, Castillo.
Commissioner Castillo?
Thank you very much. I think we all want to be associated with this, and we're very thankful that it came forward. This Tuesday, the county commission passed an item on Eid, the, the Islamic holiday of ending the fast after the month of Ramadan, and sent a resolution to the Broward County School Board that they approve, I believe it's the first day of Eid as a day off for students. Do we have any information, Mr. Dodge, on whether or not that's approved, or whether or not charter schools are asked to do the same thing, or asked to weigh in on such questions? How does it work when the school board, I'm assuming that this is going to pass? How does it work when the school board adopts an item like that?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dodge?
Yes. We follow Broward County's school schedule. So if they were to determine that that is an official day off based on the 180-day calendar, we would, according to our charter, follow that process.
And Mayor Ordis or Commissioner Cyple, as our league representatives, is, is the league encouraging cities to, to pony up with resolutions of their own in support of this item? Has there been any discussion at the Broward League about Eid?
Up to my knowledge, Commissioner.
Mayor, if I may, it's to Cyple.
Go ahead, Commissioner Cyple.
To, to my colleague Castillo, there was, there has not, that I have heard at any of the meetings for that specific holiday you're talking about Eid, but there was discussion about the Juneteenth and the fact that a number of cities have gotten on board with that, as well as, I think, Commissioner Holden has peasant item on the county commission, I believe, for next week's meeting to, to do exactly what, what our city did, forming a, a resolution. And I don't know how theirs will be crafted as far as the exact language of days off and, and all that, but a recognition certainly of the, of the holiday. I guess we'll have to wait and see how they finally come out with that.
Well, we'll look forward to seeing that. Thank you.
All right, further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to say thank you to you and to my colleagues for supporting this item. You know, this, this does represent a, a, a part of our community that has, you know, has experienced hardships throughout the years, and this certainly goes a long way towards, you know, helping to equalize some of those hardships that have been experienced through those years. So thank you again to everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, city clerk, call a roll, please.
Mayor, if I may, before I call the roll, there were two letters that had come in on the public comments on this item. The first letter is from Florida Detroit Representative Chevron Jones, Pembroke Pine City Commission. I wish to express my support for the recognition of Juneteenth as a holiday. Juneteenth commemorates the day in 1865 that federal troops arrived in Galveston, Texas to take control of the state and ensure that all enslaved people be freed. After the Civil War ended in the spring of 1865, General Granger's arrival in Galveston marked liberation for 250,000 enslaved people in Texas. Celebrations broke out among new, newly freed black people, and this celebration became annually honored as Juneteenth. In December 1865, slavery in America was formally abolished with the adoption of the 13th Amendment. Juneteenth honors the end of slavery in the United States and is considered the longest-running African-American holiday in our history. This holiday represents a significant shift to the progress of our country, one that ensures reverence to a community of this country that continues to fight for parity. Thank you for your consideration and steadfast commitment to equality. Sincerely, Chevron D. Jones, State Senate, District 35. The second letter comes from Mr. Ram Tewari. A statement of support by Ram Tewari for a commission item on Juneteenth. My name is Ram Tewari. I reside at 8860 Northwest 3rd Street, Pembroke Pines, Florida 33024. I live in District 1, Commissioner Tom Good's district. I'm a member of the Diversity and Heritage Board. This email is in support of the item being discussed this evening. This item, Juneteenth, as a city-paid employee holiday, is timely and of utmost importance to the city. It is a right thing to do for, by my city, the city of Pembroke Pines, tenth-largest home to over 170,000 residents, one of the best cities to live in America, the happiest city in South Florida, and an all-America city. The city of Pembroke Pines has been a trailblazer, and this is an excellent opportunity to lead the way. For example, in the recent past, the city recognized by naming Peace Way in the Park for Nonviolence Peace Way by Mohandas Karamchand Gandhi, also known as Mahatma Gandhi, and Martin Luther King Jr. Juneteenth, also known as Emancipation Day, Black Independence Day, or Jubilee Day, it celebrates the end of slavery after the Civil War, is currently recognized by 47 states and the District of Columbia as a state holiday or observance. Local state and now senators proposed bill to make Juneteenth a federal holiday. Therefore, I humbly request the city commission to discuss and approve this item. This approval shall be matching with the mission of the Diversity and Heritage Advisory Board, which is to promote awareness and to celebrate the rich heritage and vast diversity of the city of Pembroke Pines, and make recommendations to the city commission on diversity and equity strategies that strengthen connections with diverse community groups and with city government. Regards and best wishes, Ram Tewari.
Thank you.
Thank you, city clerk.
Any other discussion or notices?
Yes, I had a, yeah, I had a question. Castillo?
Hold on one second. City clerk? Any other?
Those were the two messages that came in, Mayor. Thank you.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yeah, very quickly, I can bring this up, Mayor, if you prefer, on, on old business. But what is the plan for Martin Luther King Day this year? I know we have COVID. Is there any, is there any activity that's going to be going on?
City manager?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we, we are discussing that with Christina as far as events. It's very, very difficult. Most of all of our events are now virtual, but I, I will get with Christina, and we'll get back to you regarding that.
You know, it's Monday, right?
That's correct. Yes.
Commissioner Cyple?
Yes, I, I don't know that we have anything planned specifically for our city, but the YMCA, which is a big part of our city, is having their annual breakfast that they have. You know, they do have done that many years in a row now, their annual MLK breakfast, but it is all being done virtually. So you can go onto the YMCA site, you will see the link, and you can participate and enjoy. They do have a fantastic speaker that's going to be there this year, but everything will be virtual because of the pandemic that we're having. But you can participate and be part of the, the day's event virtually through the YMCA site.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
City Mayor Mars having the parade.
Okay, thank you. I can't, I was just thinking about it the other day, that this COVID, we're almost a year into it. Can you believe that? Almost a year already. So, all right, item 26, further discussion. City Clerk, call a roll, please. Commissioner Good? Commissioner Good?
Yes, I can't understand the clerk.
Commissioner Good? Can you hear me?
Well, you may be talking a tad close to your mic.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. Commissioner Cyple?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Good.
The record, Mayor and Commissioner, permanent number, Mayor and Commissioner is number 1956, 1956.
Thank you, sir. Resolutions, item 27, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Number 27 is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number 2020-R-53, which reads as follows. Proposed resolution number 2020-R-53 is a resolution to approve the 2020-2023 city of Pembroke Pines Southwest Focal Point Senior Center Community Shuttle Operations under Title VI Program pursuant to the Federal Transit Administration requirements, directing the appropriate city officials to take any and all action necessary to effectuate the intent of the resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and finally, providing for an effective date. 2020-R-53, number 27, on the floor for consideration, Mayor and Commissioner. Thank you.
Castillo moves the item.
Thank you, Commissioner Good.
Commissioner Castillo moves the item. Commissioner Good, second discussion?
Yes. Mayor Castillo?
Commissioner Castillo?
Uh, Mr. Dodge?
Mr. Dodge?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. So, as you know, I, I send you a memo over the weekend that I copy staff on where I lay out what my questions are, having read the, the agenda. On this one, I didn't get an answer, and that's a rare thing, but I know that you guys are busy. So my question was, it wasn't clear from the agenda review form what this, uh, this is about. So you guys are going to buy some vehicles that, that come with GPS, and, and the GPS is to track where the vehicles are? Or is the GPS for some other purpose?
Uh, Commissioner, that's a different item. This item is only the change in the guidelines, Title VI program guidelines.
Okay, so what was the answer to the other one?
Well, well, the other one is GPS, where we keep track of the vehicles where they are and can locate them.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. That wasn't in the, the agenda form, and that's why I was, I was a little confused, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
Can we do the question? Okay, city clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyple?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioner, the permanent number for the record is number 3728, 3728. Next up is 28, I, I, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Next up being 28 is proposed resolution number 2021-R-01. It is proposed resolution number 2021-R-01. It is Proposed Resolution Number 2021 R-01 is a resolution of the City Commission of the City Pembroke Pines, Florida, authorizing and directing the signing of the submission of a grant application and supporting documents and assurances to the Florida Department of Transportation, that's the FDOT, and the acceptance of a grant award from the FDOT, and the purchase of vehicles and/or equipment and/or expenditures of grant funds, directing the appropriate city officials to take any and all necessary action to effectuate the intent of the resolution, provided for conflicts, severability, and finally, provided for an effective date. This is item number 28, 2021 R-01, on the floor for consideration, Mayor Commission. Thank you.
Commissioner Good, so moves.
Who is that?
Commissioner Good.
Commissioner Good makes the motion. Commissioner Seifel seconds the motion. Discussion.
Castillo, question.
Commissioner Castillo for a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, Mr. Dodge, this question was not answered. Does this item in any way, shape, or form have anything to do with the bridge projects on Pines Boulevard?
Uh, no, no, Commissioner, it does not.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Dodge?
Yes, Mayor.
Maybe you should give Commissioner Castillo a whole outline of that other one, so we, every, you know, just to say which it is exactly. Commissioner Good?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so, to the, to the City Manager, I, you know, this is great that you guys are capable of doing this, purchasing buses using federal dollars. I'm assuming that the buses that we currently have purchased in prior years with federal dollars, when they get ready for being turned in, is that something that we give back to them? Or is that something that we keep? Or is there a title exchange? Just?
Well, nor, normally, uh, the end life of these is probably very little value, and, uh, I'm not certain we've ever in the past, if we've recouped any dollars, they usually reinvested in newer vehicles within the program. But I'm not aware of us ever having to reimburse the state once the vehicle has reached its normal lifespan. But I can get that out from that.
I, I'm not talking about reimbursing the state, it's just that they too don't, they're not going to take the vehicle, I guess. But there is a disposition of it, and I'm assuming that it, the title transfers to the city for disposition?
Well, the title is to the city, and if it's, it becomes surplus property, Commissioner.
Okay, the second question I have on this is, um, you know, we have a lot of our buses that are, um, I guess we have recently outfitted them with some sort of makeshift, call it curtains, I'm assuming, in order to protect the drivers from being exposed possibly to, to the COVID. Uh, is there any, um, real effort being made by these bus manufacturers to actually build in a, uh, a barrier for, you know, any future pandemic type of circumstances where the bus drivers are protected from the public? Uh, because this is a very, very important aspect of being able to provide services to have bus drivers that are not sick.
Commissioner, that's a good question. I'll research that for you.
Yeah, okay, okay, good. That, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
City Clerk, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
And Mayor Commission, permanent number for the record for all of your notes is 3729, 3729. Thanks, Mayor Commission.
Thank you. Uh, City Clerk, the regular agenda, Item 29.
Mr. Mayor, may I read?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Under, under number 29 for the record is a discussion of possible action to direct the city administration to work with the Broward County Legislative Delegation and the lobbyists for the fiscal year 2021-2022 legislative appropriation requests, the backup of which is in the Green Book and also online on the website. Thank you, Mayor Commission, number 29.
Thank you. Uh, discussion? Motion by Commissioner Seifel. Is there a second?
Second, Commissioner Good.
Second by Commissioner Good. On discussion, today I had an advocacy meeting with the Florida League of Cities, and they're talking about, already bills are being submitted for home rule intervention. So, what they've asked us to do, and if you could do it as well, uh, we want you to, on a text message, type in the word, type in a number, 50457. 50457. And that's to do with home rule. You'll get a response back from the Florida League as to how you can lobby or discussion on the home rule. So, 50457, just text it in, and under the reply, just say "home rule." All right? Okay. Uh, League, do you have anything else, uh, Mr. Commissioner Seifel?
Uh, on this item, Mayor, that you're talking, the item before us?
Oh, oh, we didn't vote on it, I'm sorry. City Clerk, call a roll, please, on Item 29. Okay.
Commissioner Seifel?
Who has a question?
Mr. Mayor, this is Commissioner Good. Can I, can I ask some questions on this? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, the, uh, virtual is not working well. So, I, I just, I did, when we put these in, I mean, these items, we carry as all four items, uh, you know, and, you know, give them to our, work, work with our delegation and our lobbyists and everything. Is there potential for, because we give four to be diluted as opposed to one? I mean, there's a lot of, uh, of, uh, a word coming out of Tallahassee about the budget and appropriations, and the fact is saying, don't expect much at all. And I'm just kind of concerned about if we, if we submit too many, uh, could we be actually diluting our request and maybe not make any?
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, actually, before the manager gets on, actually, we don't try to put in too many. But as you just talked about, they are diluted, and then we have to pick a couple, and our lobbyists do that, as to where that'd be safe for the city and beneficial. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Lauren Jackson, I believe, is on the line from Eric's Consultants. We have been working with her for some time now. We actually started off with, I believe, about 10 projects, and in our discussions with our consultants, we looked at those that we thought we had the greatest possibility of it being funded. Uh, Lauren has also been working with our certain representatives that will sponsor these individually. So, if Lauren, if you could address the commission on this, I would appreciate it.
Ms. Lauren?
Absolutely, um, yeah, so, with those four, we were given those in advance, and we had informal conversations with our delegation members. It may be that not all of them are submitted, but they are looking at them and determining, you know, uh, where they might be the most useful and which ones they feel the most comfortable moving forward with. Um, and to Commissioner Good's point, um, you know, it is going to be a tight budget year. They, they were at first looking at a $5.4 billion deficit over two years, but that has narrowed even further to $3.3 billion, because revenue collections have been a little bit better than they originally projected. Um, they're now looking, as the start of committee weeks, how it's all started today, actually, with appropriations committees, they're looking at an exercise of cutting $2 billion from the budget potentially. However, we're not sure, you know, is there going to be another stimulus passed by Congress? We know President-elect Biden is already speaking about trying to get something passed. We don't know kind of how it's going to play out, and we just want to make sure that work in play, just in case, um, there ends up being funding and they end up having that appetite. It is a very low chance. However, um, we don't want to not be in play in case things end up a little bit better than they are.
Thank you, Ms. Lauren. And further questions for our lobbyists?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Commissioner Good again. I just, again, I, you know, I see all these items and, you know, just sometimes understanding some things. You know, we have some smaller-ticket items essentially in these four that, you know, if you have sympathy, let's give them something. So, you go to the, it's, uh, less expensive, I guess, if you will, and you wind up getting something, uh, but you don't get what you really need. And I think what we really need is these top two projects, I should just focus on these. These are the ones that are really serving the communities. One is about dealing with the flooding, the issues that we had to be dealing with just recently. That's a huge issue. And then the, uh, the license plate meter is a huge, uh, improvement for our ability to provide safety in the city. And both of those are a direct relationship to, uh, serving our citizens. I, I know that Items C and D are, you know, they're, they're related to the utilities, and question ask how sensitive I am to utility stuff, but i- if we wind up getting a vac truck instead of being able to provide, you know, safety, uh, or, or, you know, flood protection to our community, I, I, I just think we should stay focused on, on the top two items and not be pushing everything in there and having some sympathy handout for something that doesn't really serve the citizens of this community.
Seifel?
Yeah.
Mr. Commissioner Seifel?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I, I agree somewhat with my colleague on, you know, trying to, um, choose what, what we really need with the hopes that we might get something of it. I would, um, it's my understanding on the one item, on the seepage, which is a huge, huge impactful item for a lot of our community, which I learned quite a bit about how much it actually impacts so much in our community when I was able to have a, have a meeting with a resident and, and Kevin Hart. And I understand Kevin Hart is, is on the line tonight and did want to speak a little bit about that, the seepage, so that we all have a real good understanding of how, um, how important that is and how many, uh, homes and, and areas that it actually affects. So, Mr. Dodge, is Mr. Hart, um, here for a presentation?
I saw him earlier. I believe he is.
Mr. Hart, are you on the line?
Uh, I am, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners, and to the public. Um, if you like, I can give you a brief presentation on that seepage management project. I'd be happy to do it.
Please.
Yes, please.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, if that's okay?
Good.
Okay, can everyone see the share screen?
On the screen, sir.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, what you're seeing here is US 27. You can see the western limits of the City of Pembroke Pines here, from I-75 West to US 27. Uh, the star here is the, uh, proposed location for what we're calling a seepage management pump station. And what happens, as you can see, the Conservation Area 3A, which is part of the Florida Everglades, uh, the water elevation in that conserva- conservation area is much higher than the water levels on the east side of US 27. And the groundwater actually flows to the east under US 27, and it impacts those communities and those lakes. Uh, the term is seepage, and, uh, we see it in those lakes, especially the ones that are closest to US 27. And it, uh, the impact is that it raises the water levels in those lakes. It makes it harder for the district to lower those levels. Uh, we saw those impacts during Tropical Storm Eta. And so, the project would be to put a pump station in there that would redirect the water back into the canal on US 27. So, here's a, a blow-up of that area. You can see the lake there, that's the Hidden Lake Community. So, the idea would be to, uh, move the water back from the lake, pump it into US 27, and South Florida Water Management District has their S9 pump station right there at Griffin Road, uh, just west of US 27. And they actually operate that pump station almost, uh, on a continuous basis, not the larger ones, but the smaller S9s, just to manage seepage. So, uh, this project would pump seepage from the Hidden Lake area under into that US 27 canal north, and then right back into it. It, it is just a continuous recirculation of seepage, but, uh, it, it would provide a tremendous benefit, in my opinion, to help, uh, better manage those water levels, uh, especially in advance of a storm, when we're trying to lower levels, create more storage. And, uh, as importantly, or even more importantly, after a storm, we want, we want to get those water levels down as quickly as we can and, uh, restore those communities back to their normal operations. So, here's another enlarged view, just to give you an idea of where we would like to, uh, at least look at putting it, pump back into US 27, and then up. So, that's a overview of the, of the project. Uh, this last slide just shows you the complexity of South Florida's, uh, canal system. But this slide here pretty much illustrates, uh, everything we're talking about in the project. It, I'm glad, uh, that we would be partnering with the city on this one. I think it's an important project and, and one that would, uh, benefit to have as many agencies involved in it as possible, because it will take, uh, coordination with South Florida Water Management District as well to, uh, to move this through and get it permitted and approved.
All right, what do you project as a cost?
Uh, I'm sorry, Mayor, could you repeat that, please?
Yeah, what do you project as a cost?
Uh, I think we had, uh, put in for our appropriations, uh, $1.2 million, if I'm not mistaken, with a, uh...
Lauren, you heard that? Ms. Jackson?
Yes, sir, um, the, the request, though, is for a lesser amount than that. And if I have the, the projects in front of me, um, we did recommend keeping the request, uh, lower this year, um, mostly because the House, um, actually passed a new rule that it won't fund, um, a project that's 50% not funded, like, from the original request. So, if it's less than 50% funded from the original request that we put in, it cannot be included in the House budget, meaning that it won't be included in the final budget. Um, and because funding is so tight, we're concerned that if you ask for too much, if they were able to find, you know, a couple hundred thousand here or there, we would not still be able to make it into that last budget. So, we, we, um, recommended that budget requests be below $400,000. Um, and I know, I believe the request, um, I apologize, I had them right in front of me. Um, but, so, 1.2 might be the full cost, but we did request a lower amount. Um, and it, and it's a good thing as well, because it's an over 50% match, which is something else that they, they're really, um, big on this year as well. Um, and I, I apologize, eh?
Oh, thank you, Ms. Jackson. Okay, Mr. Hart, anything else?
Uh, nothing for me, Mayor, thank you.
Hey, thanks.
Mayor Seifel? Mayor Seifel? My understanding is that the entire project was 1.25, but that, um, in keeping with what Ms. Jackson said, we were looking to have, um, uh, at least three partners in this, the city being one, and South Broward Drainage, uh, being the other, uh, and, uh, taking on, uh, a request of the $400,000, each of the partners in there. Is that, is that, Ms. Jackson, is that not what you were alluding to?
That is correct.
I believe so. Yeah, and South Water Management District was in that, too.
Yes, uh, yes, according to Mr. Hart, he was, you know, that would certainly be part of what, uh, what South Florida Water Management, because they have control over, um, that, that, that canal portion of it.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Hart, is that...
Uh...
Schwartz?
Further discussion?
Schwartz?
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Lauren, um, please extend my appreciation to the entire team. Um, you guys were just, have been absolutely amazing uh over the last year. Um, going above and beyond with uh daily reports of the moving parts dealing with COVID and the emergency that the state has been under. So I just want to thank you and all the efforts that you're doing. Um, I did have a question, though, for the city manager. Where would this uh money come out of that we're going to be managing if we're successful?
Yeah, Mayor, if we are successful in this, uh, this would be in a uh inappropriate uh um use of reserves because you're getting 50% of the funding for a project that normally eventually we would have 100% responsibility for.
And Mr. Hart, where does the money come from on your end?
Uh, this would come from our capital improvement fund, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Hart, that your capital improvement fund, is that, that's not reserves? That's um, that's just regular collection?
Uh, it's not reserves. Uh, it's a committed uh fund account that the district has. I I will be taking this item to our our commission uh at this month's board meeting.
And the governor appointed uh South Florida Water Management District. Where do they get their funds from?
Uh, they have a whole variety of of funds and funding. Uh, I have not personally spoken to South Florida Water Management about this project, but uh once uh it moves forward, that's something that I think both the South Brower and the city would need to do as quickly as possible.
Right. Um, on another note, Mr. Hart, I understand that we've had some manatee sightings in the city.
Uh, yes, we have, Vice Mayor, over in our Basin 1, uh over uh uh, I've heard one sighting up in the East Pasadena area. And uh, we've also had reports down in our University Drive Canal. So uh, we are monitoring that. Our goal is to, uh, if the manatee is still in the system, to uh have it exit the system. So uh, we are monitoring that, and we're gonna do everything we can to ensure that uh if we do cite it or get reports of citing, that we have our gates open so that it can uh exit out back down to the C-9 canal where I'm sure that's where it uh originally came from.
Yeah, so it's it's my understanding that there is a uh, that there's a very good chance that the manatee came in with the storm, also along with the environmental disaster that's happening down in Biscayne Bay. Um, we're all connected, whether we're in Pembroke Pines or South Miami, when it comes to our water system, and and uh nature always seems to remind us of that. Um, getting back to um Tallahassee Mayor, uh Lauren, do we know what steps the governor, who just refuses to wear a mask, uh, what what his um, what the governor's uh executive team and House and Senate Senate leadership are doing in order to protect uh other elected officials who may be coming to Tallahassee to advocate for these much needed funds?
Ms. Jackson?
Well, they have, um, currently, access to the Capitol is severely restricted. Um, in in the Senate, they're not allowing any members of the public. Um, in the House, it's it's extremely limited. Um, and all of the committees are are basically virtual. If you wanted to speak um in the House, they have limited seats uh for for testifying in a committee. Uh, in the Senate, um, actually, people are are testifying from a a location from the Civic Center, so off off off-site of the Capitol or via Microsoft Teams, I believe. Most of the members are conducting meetings via Zoom. Um, and they are having the members uh do rapid tests uh prior to entering the Capitol or prior to the committee weeks um uh for them participating. Um, so there are measures that have been taken, um, and and everyone is required to wear a mask in inside, um, to my knowledge, although most of us haven't haven't been going inside the Capitol just for safety reasons. Um, but they are uh really trying to protect the members, especially in the Senate. They're they're taking it very seriously. They they um contracted with um infectious disease experts out of Tampa General Hospital um to try to develop their plan. Um, and it's supposed to be a nimble plan, so right now i- it is this way. But if if there ends up being some sort of, you know, the the supply chain of of vaccines ends up getting uh better and improving, then um we might see that change. But for now, pretty much everything has become virtual. And and they've also blocked off all access to um uh public spaces. So, for example, Brower Days, um, we wouldn't be able to reserve a space to meet um at at the Capitol grounds um this year. And so they they went ahead and made that decision this week as well. Um, so uh that that would be, it would, it would be more, it's it's more of a virtual year this year, essentially.
And and session ends when? Well, I know what 60 is, but
It's actually, it ends in April of this year. It begins in March and it ends like April 30th, I want to say.
That's what I thought. So so and I and I say this because just a bit of forecasting, Mayor. If the Capitol is gonna be locked down virtually, I can't see how the governor is going to uh require this government or any other local government to do anything other than virtual. So
Every, every city is gonna be doing that.
Yeah, so so I'm thinking that uh if we can get um, if we can get a general sense of what the governor plans on doing instead of last minute. Because quite honestly, uh, by the order not being extended, uh, requiring us to go to the um, uh, to be in chambers. Uh, I mean, I saw on social media that that uh some of the commission was was potentially exposed. Um, and we were meeting at the time. And there was a question whether or not uh proper masks were being worn and proper distancing was being conducted. So I want to make sure that um, that we're able to function uh without the fear of risk uh from, you know, uh, anyone within City Hall along with um this whole Home Rule uh authority that seems to be more and more. Uh, I I'm very concerned that that this this could be the session where, because we can't get up there, that there could be more draconian type bills being filed. So just
But just remember, but just remember, again, we're gonna have to be involved in a virtual manner. But we have to be involved. And the budget, when it comes down, doesn't really let us know what they're gonna do till the very last minute. When they have their budget hearings and budget meetings, the House has theirs, the Senate has theirs. Then they try to come up with a uh, an an even keel for both parties, both the Houses uh to give to the budget that you requested. But it is ever more that we have to be very active on the phones with our legislators, especially once we see, you know, we know who the budget committee members are and our own commission, we have to do that, right, Commissioner, uh, Ms. Jackson?
Right.
Okay, any, any further discussion?
Mayor Cyphal?
Commissioner Cyphal, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. We have an item before us, which is talking about um our our appropriation request. And we we've had some very good conversation uh about some some other, some other issues, um, which was, which was all good. But getting back to the item before us, Mayor, are we looking to to vote um on on keeping these four items in the same order, which I would assume A is one, B is two, uh, and is that order of preference? Or exactly, Mayor, what is it that we are looking to do with these four uh four items that are in front of us?
Mr. Dodge?
The I, the items in front of us, Mayor, uh, these are the ones that we're, we are looking at to propose. We're gonna rely upon Lauren to give us some uh idea from whoever might be sponsors. If there are four different sponsors for each one, then maybe it'd be worthwhile to uh proceed with it. If it's the desire of the commission that we take the the top two, that's something you can decide tonight, and and we limit our efforts to one, two, three, or four. Um, but certainly, the way we have ranked are the first two, we believe, are the the most important. And those are the LPRs and the uh seepage management stormwater pump station in partnership with the South Brower Drainage District.
Mayor Commissioner Good?
Commissioner Good?
Yes, so really recognizing the fact that there is a revenue shortage with the state, uh, the the competition for funds are gonna be extremely, extremely challenging. Uh, I, you know, I don't, I don't, you know, the the city manager said limit. I think it's more concentrate our effort on, you know, what are what are are really our highest priorities. And, you know, I I think the first two, uh, just the LPRs and the uh the pump station are are probably the two greatest value to the city. And not only that, uh, that they uh serve public safety and flood management, but they are both general fund items. The other two items are uh, you know, utility funded and, you know, they can be covered at some other future point or just carried over to the following year. But I I feel that it's gonna be very, very difficult to to get funds. So it's best to concentrate our efforts on these two items. And at appropriate time, I like to make a motion that we just restrict our efforts to uh items A and B, which is the LPR and the pump station.
Okay, that'll be a good time.
Mayor, if I may?
Make the motion.
I'm sorry.
Hold on, hold on a second. Commissioner Good, did you want to make a motion?
I I made that motion, yes, sir.
Uh, make
is for us to concentrate our efforts on A and B only.
Okay, he's the second.
Cyphal?
Mr. Cyphal seconds the motion. Discussion, Commissioner Cyphal.
No discussion. I think it's a good item.
Schwartz?
Oh, okay. Vice Mayor Schwartz, is that you?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Question on the motion.
On the motion, um, I I can, I can appreciate um Commissioner Good's um concern. I've been here nine years, and I've never had uh Eric's consultants ever provide us bad advice. And clearly, that this was in conjunction with the city administration presenting four items. Um, the items are fluid. We need a House member. We need a Senate member. Um, I don't agree that we should take anything off the table. Uh, to be quite honest with you, um, the governor vetoed busting last year. So we were, we were able to get what we wanted, and then it got ripped out, then it got vetoed. I I don't, um, and and it's, and the stuff that's getting vetoed has been extremely partisan. Um, I don't, I don't want to limit our uh our options because I have no idea what this governor's mansion is going to approve or not approve. So
Ms. Ms. Jackson, hold on, Commissioner.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hold on a second. Let's get our lobbyist's opinion. Uh, Ms. Jackson, uh, there's a motion on the table. Do you agree with limiting in this difference of of time uh to the two items on the table?
Well, I I did want to add um that we do already have a House sponsor for item number three. Um, we do have a House member that was interested in submitting that one. Um, and and oftentimes, what we do is we take this this list and we go to our delegation members. And we we do have a couple delegation members that are still considering um which ones that they would like to submit and focus on. And and we kind of allow them to help us also prioritize them as well. Um, so I just wanted to add that for for your consideration as well. But obviously, um, you will work with with what what comes out of the commission.
Okay, so Commissioner Good, that being said, we have a little time, although it's short. This is uh January. Do you want to hold off on your motion till we get direction from our lobbyists?
Oh, I uh, I I understand everything that's been said, and I still think that we should just, if if we have an opportunity to get somebody to sponsor something for the city, I think it should be something that we really want, not something that uh that they want necessarily. I think we can encourage them to uh be uh supportive of of the items that we really need. So I I I I hear everything and and listen, and and I understand it all. And listen, I, you know, throw everything against the wall and see what sticks. I got that, too. But I also know that sometimes if you have a a focused effort, uh, you get results, better results, so.
Schwartz?
Okay, Commissioner, Vice Mayor Schwartz.
Yeah, see, see, here's, here's the dilemma I have got here with with the position Commissioner Good that that you're taking, okay? Um, if I vote against this motion, essentially, I'm saying that I'm not supporting these legislative efforts. I think that the, um, I think the motion, if you, if you want to consolidate, if you want to change the language so that I can get my hands wrapped around it, um, I mean, obviously, prioritizing projects, we do this every year. Every year, we say, okay, city manager, put this in order. This is what we do. Let's see what, let's see what we can get done. We work with our lobbyists, and then they go out and they see, see what what fish are gonna bite. And then we have a governor who vetoes it. So, I mean, obviously, we need water relief. Um, I I've been the largest advocate for LPRs. I mean, we've asked the city manager to invest $4 million to keep our city safe. So that's nothing new. Um, a- again, give Ms. Jackson and her team the opportunity to sell it. Because here's what happens. We give her the the direction, and she's gonna come back to us anyway going, you know, we tried, but there's just no appetite for for these items this year. Why would we take anything off the table? I mean, obviously, if if we could fund this ourselves, we would do it. But then again, we've got the South Florida Water Management District that is a treasure trove of reserves. I mean, they they could pay for this $1.2 million in a blink of an eye, to to be quite honest with you. But but they're asking the city of Pembroke Pines, who, I, last time I checked, we don't have a budget line for like c- canal repairs and pumping stations. We have other government agencies, taxing authority agencies that do that. I'm happy to support the effort. But let's be honest. We've already paid taxes to Tallahassee, and Ms. Jackson's job is to make sure that our tax dollars come home. I don't want to take anything off the table, uh, Commissioner Good. I don't. So please reconsider your language so I can, so I can uh, you know, move the item forward with with full support.
Commissioner Good?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so uh in consideration of the Vice Mayor's concern, I I, you know, so I I I will amend the uh the motion such that it uh places extreme effort on A and B, uh, you know, all four items, but with the extreme efforts on A and B, primary, priority effort on A and B.
Thank you.
Very good. There are second commit, Vice Mayor?
Second.
Second the motion.
Uh, Mayor?
The Vice Mayor's second the motion. Discussion on the amended motion.
Commissioner Castillo?
Commissioner Castillo?
Would it help if we ranked these projects, uh, uh, Mr. Dodge?
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Commissioner, I I'm not sure. I I heard your comment. Could you
My comment was, would it help if we ranked these projects?
Well, the, what you have in front of you, Commissioner, is our staff recommendation uh for the order, the ranking. But certainly, the commission can change that order in any manner that you wish.
So I'm hearing that the first thing, the most important thing is the pump station. So what's the second one?
Well, the first one Well, the first one was the LPRs, the second was the pump station, the third was the sanitary sewer vacuum tanker truck, and the fourth was dealing with sanitary sewers, the inflow reduction, which also has an issue with the issues we had with wastewater from the flooding. So, those are the four.
So, does anyone take issue with the ranking? I find the ranking to be-
Amended motion was to rank one and two, but keep the others.
My question was, does anyone have any problem with the ranking?
Oh, okay. Anybody have a problem with the ranking?
Siple?
Nope. Commissioner Siple, you have a problem with the ranking?
No, no, sir. I don't have a problem with the ranking, but I think-
What's the question? What's the question? Hold on. That's the question. Does anybody have a question about the-
So, if nobody has a problem with the ranking, then we should just move the item the way it is?
Hold on. I'm trying to get an answer, please. Does anyone have a problem with the ranking as the amended motion now puts forth? Okay, Commissioner Castillo, now what do you have?
So, if no one has a problem with the ranking, let's just move the item the way it is.
Good, but I had to find that out. Okay.
That's why I asked it.
Okay, great. Under further discussion. All right, city clerk, call a roll on the amended motion, please.
Commissioner Good?
Yes?
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Siple?
Yes?
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes. Thank you, thank you for great discussion. Mr. Jackson, thank you for your team. We're going to be working very close this year. All right, reports of league, Vice Mayor, Commissioner Siple?
Yes, yes, thank you, Mayor. We had a virtual meeting, and again, a lot of discussion was a good meeting. A lot of the discussion obviously circled around garbage, waste, and that, and that moving forward with working on those items and trying to come to some ideas, resolutions, and positions on things. So, that was really the gist that I got out of the meeting, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, and I want to say that the league has been really informative to us, the Broward League. We have, we do have a coffee. The president brings in speakers for our knowledge. So, I like that idea. We've been participating with that. And Mary Lou sends us all of the gratings from the county and the CDC, so we appreciate that as well. All right, anything else? Go ahead.
Good job.
Oh, okay, Mayor, what do you have?
Yes, yes, Mayor. The first thing I have, I would like Christina Sorson's on the line to address Monday's event. If you'd give her just one minute, please. Christina?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, good. Yes, so, last year, it came up, the commission asked us to create a Martin Luther King celebration event, but because of COVID, we really can't have an event. So, the cultural division reached out to an artist who put together a spoken word video as a tribute to Martin Luther King, and it's something that we're going to post on our social media and YouTube on Monday. It's, I've seen it, it's very nice, so I think you'll be happy with it.
All right, thank you, Mr. But any questions?
Mr. Mayor, the second thing I wanted to address is that in the last few meetings, there's been a number of commissioners who have asked us to either defer or bring back an item for a workshop. The ones that I have in front of me is the one issue with the biometric technology with police, the Veterans Memorial Foundation, and from a while ago, the debris monitoring and cleanup for after hurricanes. And now, this evening, you added another one for the commission to have a workshop with the auditor regarding their plan. Sometimes, it's very, very difficult for us to get everyone together with calendars, calling everybody to see where they are. If we could, if you could select some dates and just submit them to us to see when we might be able to have that, the sooner the better, and February would be very helpful to us. But it would be easier if you would give us a calendar of dates during the last two weeks of February, and whether you would like them, some of them are smaller conversations, if you would like to have one, two, or three on the agenda at one time, or do you want a night for each one independently? So, I would need to get that information from you so that we could set up these workshop meetings.
Okay, commissioners, what's your please?
Is, may I ask, is Friday on the table?
That's your call, commissioners.
Okay, good. So, just, we're being asked to send you dates that are-
It's an at times, whether it be during the day or the evening, however you would want to do that.
And what do you anticipate per workshop?
Well, it depends. For example, the Veterans Memorial Foundation, I don't think that conversation should take much more than a half hour. Debris monitoring cleanup, we've had those workshops before, but we need to finalize that, probably a couple hours. So, I mean, for both of them. So, you could probably get two or three if you're willing to spend the time, and we could set those up.
I'd be willing to do an evening, all three of them.
Okay. So, you would need to send me those, the dates that you're available, Commissioner.
Problem is, Fridays are difficult for me. My Fridays are mostly booked, but my Wednesdays are available, my Thursday afternoons into evenings are available, my Mondays are available, my Tuesdays are available. Yeah, my Tuesdays are booked, always booked.
So, I think the important thing is, for the month of February, if you, each one of you could send me in an email tomorrow, the dates that you're available, we'll try to collect those and see if we have a consensus among everyone, and then we'll just notify you immediately so it'll go on your calendar as to when it would be.
Okay.
Good idea. Go ahead.
Yes, Commissioner.
There were four items, the biometric, the veterans memorial, the debris, hurricane debris, and the auditor workshop, right? There were four items.
Yes. And there's also another one, but we're not ready yet until the commissioner auditor comes back with the RFP for sanitation contract. There's also the, with the auditors, there's the CGA contract. So, there's probably totally about six. Some of those are, a couple of them might take a single source meeting to go over all the details.
When do you want to do the workshop for the RFP for waste?
We are looking, when I said February, I forgot we're in January. I'm looking for your dates for these workshop meetings by the end of this month. We're looking and targeting if we can get everything put together to have the workshop in the early part of February for the sanitation RFP.
Okay, let's get all of our dates to the manager.
Okay.
How's it go?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Schwartz. Yeah, Mr. Dodge, I'm almost following your guidance. It would be helpful if you could break out what you feel would be the most productive way of doing it. If you're saying that you have two workshops that are just standalone subject matter, and then I'm hearing that you have four others that could be done all in one sitting. But I also haven't heard of how many hours you want to commit to it. And we also need to know, I guess this would be the guidance of the mayor, some of our workshops, we've had public input, other workshops, it's just been the commission. So, if there's certain subject matter, and I would ask the mayor to work with the city manager to determine if there's going to be public input, because that's going to determine how long these meetings are going to be.
Okay, we're going to get, I'll get with the manager, and we'll come up with a plan. The manager will get to all of us with dates and language.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr.?
Yes, so, I guess what I'm saying, Mayor, is-
We got it.
However you think it's best for you, because you're the one on having to deal with this virtual stuff, right? So, I don't want to overwhelm you or consume you.
No problem at all.
Just work with the, you know-
I'll get with the manager. Okay, we got it. All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Just a very quick items, if I can, just as quick updates, and we'll repair to further conversation later. I provided to you an order from Judge Singal on the FEMA litigation. I'm waiting for a memorandum from our special counsel, Baker Donaldson in Washington, with regard to certain recommendations, which I'll share with you once I receive them. You do have a copy of the judge's order. There's no need to go into details about its conclusion, but I will brief with you further individually to the extent possible when I receive the Baker Donaldson memorandum, which is what we've asked for from both Lake Worth Beach, Deerfield Beach, and for Pembroke Pines. We'll brief with you on that subject. Secondly, the large user agreement litigation with Hollywood, as you've seen in my recent emails, the court ruled in the city's favor on our motion, against the city Hollywood's motion to dismiss. And as you may remember, some number of weeks ago, I requested a shade meeting at the suggestion of our special counsel, Cindy Lacudera from the Ackerman Law Firm. I will be conferring with her during the end of this week to look at what date she's looking at for a shade meeting with the commission, which will segue with when you are available for that particular purpose. And lastly, by email, and as an update to you as a matter of public record, the Southwest Ranches litigation, which was scheduled for trial in March, has been deferred. We are yet to know what the date certain would be, given certain COVID-19 issues and matters that I described to you in the memorandum. At this point, those are only three issues to discuss, no substance to be offered, but I will get with you all individually, and as needed publicly, where we need to meet on the subjects of each of the three. If you have any questions, I'm happy to respond, but I would prefer to relegate these three items to a private conversation individually with each one of you. Thank you all for listening. I appreciate the opportunity.
Any questions for the city attorney? All right, thank you, city.
Thank you, man.
All right, Commissioner Siple, you have item 30.
Actually, Mayor, if it's possible, we can vote on them separately, but I'd like to talk about item 30 and 31 because they really are the same type of request from me. I will read both of them.
Whatever your pleasure.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Discussion of possible action for the city of Pembroke Pines to conduct a virtual vigil event on February 14th, 2021, where residents can honor the memory of all the lives impacted by the tragedy that occurred at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School on February 14th, 2018. And the second item, Mayor, I will read, is discussion of possible action for the city of Pembroke Pines to conduct a virtual event on Tuesday, August 31st, 2021, to bring awareness to National Opioid Abuse Awareness Day.
Castillo seconds both.
I'm sorry?
Okay. Hold on, Commissioner Castillo, she's not done yet. Vice, Commissioner Siple, continue, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I bring both of these just to get them, you know, for approval and to get them on our calendar. February 14th is coming up, you know, fairly soon. And even though it's a virtual, there still is, you know, some work to be done for folks to know about it and to set it up, and for them to be able to link in and join in that day. The same thing, we have a little bit more time with the opioid abuse awareness, but we have held those at City Hall in the past, and I think they're both very, very good items for us as a city to come forward and be supportive, be supportive of. The Stoneman Douglas, I don't think I have to say much about that, that everybody knows where that is. It's just, you know, a horrible tragedy that happened, and we do need to always remember those that were lost, and not just those that were lost, but their families and how it impacted families and entire communities. The other for opioid abuse awareness day is the numbers on opioid abuse, deaths, overdoses, and just ripping families apart. Those numbers, unfortunately, Mayor, continue to go up, and they're at a horrible, horrible level. And so, bringing about awareness in a city that shows in many different ways how it cares about, you know, not only its residents, but the entire community surrounding us. I think these are two good items that I would certainly hope that my colleagues would support 1,000%. And we would give direction then to city manager and Ms. Thornton and Ms. Noble and all of them to go forward with planning an event for today. So, I ask for your support on these two items. Thank you, Mayor.
City Attorney? Second the items.
City Attorney, can we combine the items?
So long as the motion clarifies that it is broken down into three subparts as prescribed by Commissioner Siple, if that's on the record clear, then the motion can encapsulate all three as described.
All right, let's try to have a motion combining the two items. Anybody?
As long as they're clear and they're articulated as part of the motion.
Got it.
Mayor, my motion then would be to combine item 30 and 31 with giving, having some action taken, giving direction to have action taken, to have a virtual meeting on February 14th for the Marjory Stoneman Douglas event, and also to have a virtual meeting on Tuesday, August 31st, 2021, to bring awareness to National Opioid Abuse Awareness Day.
Castillo seconds both.
Commissioner Castillo seconds the item. Discussion on the motion.
Commissioner Good, I'd just like to say, these are very forward-thinking. Commissioner Good?
Commissioner Good, what is it?
Yeah, I just wanted to say to Commissioner Siple, these are very good forward-thinking items. Thank you for bringing them forward. I am full supporter of that.
She always does. She's great. Thank you. All right, city clerk, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Siple?
Yes?
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Any new business?
Thank you all. Thank you all. I appreciate it.
New business? Old business? Have a good night.
Good night.
You're now adjourned.
Bye, everyone. Be safe.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Wear your mask.
Okay.